Great. This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice to this meeting is being given pursuant to provisions of the Oklahoma Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board's reorganization in January of last year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice that schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, and the Two River Times on January twentieth, twenty-twenty-three. That notice is also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. Copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file at the office in Borough Court. Copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Roll call please.
Mr. Nuchesny.
Here.
DeAngelo here. Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Forte.
Here.
Dr. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Cincella. Mr. Shavetti. Mrs. Newman.
Here.
And Mr. Layden.
Here. Please join me in the second round.
The Constitution of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this law, with the freedom of speech and of
Right, Doug, we've got owns of office. Ask the individual who would be taking the oath to put his stand. There's your right hand, repeat after me, state your name. You're supposed to be on the court. State your name where appropriate. I.
Peter Nuchesny.
Martin Ryan.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith allegiance to the same.
And I will bear deep faith allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of the zoning board of adjustment member.
All the duties of the zoning board of adjustments member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
May I affirm or say still helping there?
Still helping there.
Okay, thank you. And I ask you to sign above your name. And then hand that to me and I will perform those. Welcome aboard.
Usually whisper this, we only yell duck once.
Sheila, how many copies of the dropped in your report do we have? It's the ones that are right. Just the ones that are in our pack now.
Yes.
Hey, everybody. So just a heads up, I think you ladies walked in late. We're going to do our rework first, then we're going to do our admin items quickly. Then we're going to move on to our annual report and the discussion about the draft that's been circulated. Then we're going to move on to a quick overview with regard to the boards and the master plan. And then we're going to have a discussion about the master plan more broadly. Uh, that being said, we need some nominations for chair, vice chair, secretary, et cetera.
Um, I will. If there is no objection, nominate Mr. Leader for one more term as chair.
I'll have a second then.
How do you accept?
Four more years.
So, so, so Peter, so Peter said one more year because we talked about this. And I have specifically said to him that I have to do some sort of an exit that isn't Irish. And so I am okay with everybody's interest in having me chair the board this year. But I want to put it on the record that this is the last year. Um, I want to work towards transitioning, um, the leadership of this board, um, to, um, some or all of you. And, um, I would be pleased to sit in the seat for another year, but I want you all to hold me to what I'm saying. Uh, it's.
We don't impeach you before then.
Yeah, I could be impeached. I could be impeached.
It's actually what the back half of this meeting is about tonight.
Is that right? Yeah. For a session, I hope. First and second, how are you? Do we have a second?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Marty. Uh, Mr. Nuchesny.
Yes.
Mr. DeAngelo.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And the Forte.
Yes.
Dr. Walker.
Yeah.
Newman. Yes.
Welcome to later.
No. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank all of you. Um, with regard to vice chair, I would, uh, be proud to nominate Mr. Nuchesny as vice chair. Um, Peter has been excellent in that seat and I see him as part of the future leadership of the board. I think he does an excellent job and he has my full support. Second, I can.
Mr. Nuchesny.
Oh, sir.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. DeAngelo.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Forte.
Yes.
Dr. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. DeAngelo.
Yes.
And Mr. DeAngelo.
Yes.
Congratulations, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thanks, Peter.
Everyone. Appreciate it.
For the secretary. Uh, who might we?
I don't know. Hmm. So, uh, to me, so I'll just make a motion to, uh, appoint the board secretary, what Sheila Olson has. The board secretary.
I'll second it with a comment, Sheila, that I know that it's been a, a steep learning curve, but you've been doing a really good job. We're very, very lucky to have you and thankful, um, that you've, uh, elected to work with us and to help the community the way you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thanks, Sheila.
Mr. Nuchesny.
Yes.
Mr. DeAngelo.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Forte.
Yes.
Dr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Newman.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, for professionals, uh, everybody will remember that there's really two ways to go about this. We either do the fair and open process or the non-fair and open process, as odd as those labels are. Uh, this year, we did not go out to bid. We did not interview different people. We did do that last year. Um, we followed suit with counsel. We did not do fair and open this year. And accordingly, uh, I'm going to make the recommendation that we reappoint our existing board attorney, Dr. Phobatz, that we reappoint our existing board engineer, CME, and our existing board planner, um, A, A, C, 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 H. I'll start with Doug Coles.
We need to do more. What should we do?
I think we need to do it individually.
Second. For comments, um.
And Mr. Nuchesny.
Yes.
Mr. DeAngelo.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Forte.
Yes.
Dr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Newman. Upstate. And Mr. Layden.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm, I'll make a point, I'll make a, a motion then to appoint the board engineer, uh, CME associates.
Second.
Mr. Nuchesny.
Yes.
Mr. DeAngelo.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Forte.
Yes.
Dr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Newman.
Upstate.
And Mr. Layden.
Yes.
Uh, motion to appoint more planner, Dr. Cat Evans.
Backer. Mr. Nuchesny.
Yes.
DeAngelo.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Forte.
Yes.
Dr. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Layden.
Upstate.
And Mr. Jeter.
Yes. I, I would like to thank both of you, your organization in total, with Doug personally. Um, this board has tremendous guidance, uh, from its professionals and wouldn't be able to do what we do without your, uh, good counsel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, meeting dates for twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you.
Uh, Sheila, we had dates that we previously had worked through. Um, does anybody have any questions about the dates that we had selected and discussed, uh, maybe in November? Who?
We have another.
There are you choose.
Actually, if you need.
When is the masters?
There.
July, July ninth, for the, uh, twenty-first, I'm going to see out of the country, that's what I'm going to worry about. I'll say. Well, I don't think the masters, I don't think the masters conflicts with April third, so. I think we're good.
All right, uh, I'll make a motion then to adopt the, uh, the dates we previously set for twenty-twenty-five. Second.
Chen.
Yes.
DeAngelo.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Forte.
Yes.
Dr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Newman.
Yes.
Mr. Layden.
Yes. Now, what everyone's been waiting for, the approval of the official newspaper.
What were the?
Which are the best, uh, before the Asbury Park Press, the Stradler.
Those sound like the right ones. I'll make a motion to adopt them. Okay.
Mr. Nuchesny.
Yes.
Mr. DeAngelo.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Forte.
Yes.
Dr. Walker.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Mr. Layden.
Yes.
There are minutes from December twenty, uh, December fifth meeting. Uh, I have reviewed the minutes. I find no amendments to be made. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Second. Let's, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Nuchesny.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo.
Yes.
And Mr. Ryan, you, Upstate.
Upstate, thank you.
Um, Mr. Forte.
Uh, yes.
And Dr. Walker, you're upstate.
Oh, upstate.
Mrs. Newman.
Upstate, Mr. Layden.
And Mr. Layden.
Yes.
Uh, resolution, recognizing and ready, you want to read the bridge, which we're issued? Sure. So the, uh, the resolution, um, thanking an outgoing member has become a tradition. Um, and, uh, the board really wants to recognize all the hard work that people put in. Most recently, we lost Mr. Ridgeway just a month before the end of his term. Um, and thereby we have put forth the following resolution. Whereas John Ridgway, having served diligently as a member of the zoning board of adjustment of the Borough Fairhaven since February one, two thousand and ten.
Wow.
And whereas John Ridgway during his years of service consistently displayed thoughtful analysis of landing applications coming forward to the board, often identifying conditions which the board should address and offering solutions, which resulted in the protection of the health, safety, safety and welfare of the residents of the Borough Fairhaven. And whereas the board desired to publicly recognize and express its appreciation to John Ridgway for his dedicated professional service and invaluable contributions, this patient as a member of the zoning board of adjustment. Now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby finds and concludes that special reasons exist for the adoption of this resolution, recognizing John Ridgway for his exemplary service as a member of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Be it further resolved by the zoning board of adjustment that it hereby makes and adopts this resolution, recognizing John Ridgway for his dedicated service as a member of the zoning board of adjustment and hereby extends to John Ridgway, the zoning board of adjustments, best wishes for successful, for success in all of his future endeavors. I would thereby make that motion. Without that resolution.
I will second.
Mr. Nuchesny.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Skip the annual report, resume.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Uh, Goodman Resolution Fifty-O Place. I will make a motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, just a second.
Later.
Back to.
Moved out of tears. What's that? It moved out of tears.
Uh, Mr. Nuchesny.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Upstate, thank you.
Mr. Forte.
Uh, I'll stay involved.
Dr. Walker.
I'll understand.
Uh, Newman. Upstate, please. And Mr. Layden.
Yes.
Motion's clear.
Uh, resolution for GIL to under Osford Avenue. I will make a motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
Mr. Nuchesny.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Upstate, thank you.
Mr. Forte.
Yes.
Dr. Walker.
Okay.
Mrs. Newman.
Upstate.
And Mr. Layden.
Yes.
Yeah, I think who's administrative, let's move on to the annual reports.
So, um, we've done this every year in recent memory, but I will remind people that when I originally got on the board, this annual report was not being done. Um, we, uh, do these annual reports for the purpose of actually reporting back to council on the planning board, what the zoning board has seen in the past year. I believe it's called out in the MLU, right, Doug? But the annual report of the zoning board called out in the MLU, well?
Yes.
Yeah, it's right. Um, and this year, um, Marty Ryan has worked on it. Marty worked on it in the past. Frank Forte worked on it. Frank had not worked on it in the past. Whether or not we can identify exactly why it's so spectacular, I'm not quite sure. Um, but I wonder if the two of you would like to, uh, give everyone sort of a summary of, uh, what you put together, what your thinking is. I know that everybody got a copy in advance and let's talk it through. Yeah, me.
Um, all right, so we have the, uh, the report. So what we did this year was we took delivery of going back to twenty-seventeen to present, um, to kind of look at the trends that have happened through the, through time and kind of catalog those to understand where, you know, we may be able to improve or where there's, um, you know, issues worth exploring. So kind of the high level summary is that for twenty-twenty-three, right, the, uh, the kind of trends fell in line with historical standards. So additions represented about fifty percent of the applications. Um, there were ten applications received. Five were heard and decided. Out of those five, four received in twenty-twenty-two, which is kind of interesting, right? Um, and then one was received in twenty-twenty-three, so a bunch carried. Ten percent were for new construction. Twenty percent were for porch and then twenty percent were used variance. Um, which that was probably the sticks and sprouts and then there's, there's probably something else to it. So, you know, kind of the takeaways, and we go to the back of the report too, there's some detailed information, um, to draw everyone's attention to. We went back and broke down every zone and whether it was historic district or not, and cataloged what quantity of variances there were for twenty-twenty-three and then back from twenty-seventeen to present. So historically, if you go back and look, general additions represent sixty percent of overall applications. Porch at fourteen, new construction at twelve, and then a listing of like random sort of categories that represent these splinter factions in the overall history. So again, additions represent important point, most of this. If you go back further and you look, and we count the number of variances by zone, unsurprisingly, R five has the most, right? From twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-three, we've had twenty-one, R ten and R ten A both at fifteen. And then R thirty, interestingly enough, waterfront property, right? Uh, there's all sorts of repairing issues with that. Come in at twelve. Um, but again, it holds true that smaller footprint lots in town have more challenges with building and variance, uh, issues. Therefore come on, you know, before us and, and need to be, uh, adjudicated. Um, and then further, we did some interesting analysis here on the escrow, the average escrow costs. It's worth noting, uh, historically, the kind of, uh, following inflation post-COVID, they've grown at a pretty interesting growth rate, uh, over six percent compounded a year in average escrow fees, um, which is kind of probably a sign of the times. And then finally, in the very back, there's application count by year in history. And, uh, we've steadily trended downward with a peak application count in twenty-seventeen, actually of nineteen, twenty-twenty-three, ten, and then kind of a variation in between, but it's steadily trended, uh, downward. So just some interesting stats. Um, you know, one of the takeaways I had particularly is going through and doing this with Marty is that the, the data we have is really not good. So the recommendation I have, among others, is to standardize it going forward so that we can better track and understand where this stuff, you know, lies, right? There's a lot of with, you know, turnover in, you know, both board secretary, people keeping the data, it's mishmash together. Oh, porch, second floor addition only, uh, driveway, it's like a, none of it's standardized. So this general addition category, I went through and scrubbed it, try to make sure it was as accurate as possible. And I think it's directionally consistent anyway with the historical data, but one of the takeaways is going forward, if we standardize the data, we'll have a better idea of what we're doing. And then one of the recommendations going forward too is to track the quantity of variances and then how many ultimately pass. Like one of the things this board does really well, right? And this is, I've gone through two years of it, is we make a concerted effort to try to take down the amount of variances that happen or ultimately we grant, right? So we say, hey, what can we do? You come here, you ask for three, how do we get to two or one, even if we grant it? We do a lot of that here. We do a good job, you know, kind of producing that. And I want to demonstrate that for the go forward because I think it's important. So those are the, uh, high level takeaways. Good? Anything I missed?
Excellent. Okay. Marty, if you may.
That's that Frank is an Excel wizard and I need to take lessons from him. And I also want to thank Sheila.
Say, yeah.
I want to thank Sheila for cobbling together the whole brand on pretty short notice. So it was much appreciated. Thanks, Sheila.
So, you know, in a lot of ways, um, in a perfect town and an ideal world, the zoning board wouldn't have anything to do. Uh, because people would comply with the ordinances, the lots would be consistent, the expectations would be in line with the ordinances. And we would come here every night, we would meet and then we would go have a drink. Um, the truth is that Fairhaven has a lot of really odd lots and the zoning, because of the way the town has developed, has left us with some things I think that are a little harder here than they are in other places. And as a result, I think that the zoning board in Fairhaven has always been active. It's clear that there's been dips when the economy has changed. It's also clear, um, that the spike, when the economy gets better, um, is apparent and I think will, will be coming through. I, I want to note with the council members that are here, I think that what we did with regard to the ordinances, um, really helped the zoning board over the last twelve months. The consistency with regard to the measurement of square footage has made things a lot easier. We are no longer in here trying to figure out what the calculations are. I don't think that that happened once in the last twelve months. And I think that it's inspiration for what we can do in the future. Not only to evaluate whether or not the ordinance as they sit are the way they need to be, but also with regard to how we adapt around trends and things that people want to do. And that's not to say that because we're post-COVID and a lot of people work from home, we should let people have bigger houses. But it is to say that where we spot trends, we may want to dig in and try and understand whether or not our ordinances are in line with expectations and, um, and the way that our town has developed over time. Um, it is critically important to me personally, and I know the other zoning board members, that Fairhaven develops in a way that, um, preserves what is special about it for the generations to come. And I think that working with the council and the planning board to set the rules, um, is a big part of that process because the rules should be applied evenly to everybody and they should work. And when they're not working, we should flag it and we should talk about it. And I want to thank everybody that's come here tonight that wasn't actually required to be here. Um, because we're going to move into the discussion about the master plan and, um, that is the town's critical planning document. Um, and so we're about to go through that process and that's going to be a really important discussion.
I, can I add one thing about the space? So one of the things that's really interesting, right? Everyone here knows, you know, COVID, work from home, X, Y, Z, people are expanding, right? They want a home office or whatever. You go back and you look at the trends, the addition, right, is the most popular request back from twenty-seventeen, probably if you go back further, it is too. And you would think that post-COVID, the requests for the additions, you know, outpaced or were significantly greater than pre-COVID. It really wasn't the case, it was shopping to me, actually, I expect, it really wasn't the case. And I think what it demonstrates is people always want more space. And in Fairhaven's tight lots, right, it's, you know, it's no secret economically, it's, it's a, you know, more expensive place to live than relative counterparts, so you're always trying to do more with less. And I think the data reflects it. Um, but just an interesting thought to put out there, that people always want more space irrespective of whatever they have, whether it's a R thirty lot or an R five, people always want to buy and improve. Um, we should be cognizant of that, favorable and unfavorable as we go through the, uh, the master plan.
So, you know, in, in Fifty Oak, which we just adopted the resolution on tonight, is a great example of how hard this can be.
Correct.
And how the ordinances in that case really seem to line up with what was suitable for that property. It was very interesting over many, many hearings to see that project come in line and to see how great it was in the end. And the truth is that the closer it was to the standard, the better it looked.
Yeah, that tells us, purely it tells us that our ratio was correct. Because the finished product looked like we wanted it to.
Right.
Frank and Marty, it, it looks like we approved a lot of the applications that come along. But that doesn't tell the full story of what this board really does. Uh, and, uh, although it's addressed in the body of the report, I would like, would you consider adding a, uh, a category of adding applications granted after modifications of the initial plans? Because I think that, that really tells what this board does. Because a lot of people get approved after we modify or ask them to modify their initial recommendation.
But so earlier, when I was talking about how we're going to do, oh, and maybe we do it for the twenty-twenty-four months since we already have the data, right? When we could probably, you know, uh, push it into this, but I want to do a thing where it's quantity of variance is granted, right? So if you come in, you're asking for three and then what's approved? Because that really is, that's the, that's the measurable on the, on the modification. Hey, you came in on an average, three point four variances were asked for and two were granted. And it shows that we, we've made an effort to push the applicant as close as possible to compliance. And I think to your point, I think it's a hundred percent right, it reflects the good work that's done here because the truth is, you can't, we, we, we're not going to deny every application, we're not going to prove every application, but we make a concerted effort to try to work with folks that come in here to do a good job. And I think we're good at it and, and we make an effort. And it's more to say that here than a lot of other towns, right?
When you look at the category of approvals, it doesn't tell the full story of what this board does. And I think, I think adding a category of approval with modifications, um, or ultimate eventual modifications, I think really, really tells more of a story of what this board does.
If we have it approved as submitted or approved after modifications, and I think that's what, that, that's.
Yeah, it's, it's easy because basically the data is, basically the data.
Very, there are a couple of them. There have been a couple.
Well, it's easy, right? Because the data is basically if the amount of variances granted is different from what comes in here, it's, it's essentially a modification.
Yeah, that, that is a severity though. If somebody comes in looking for six hundred square feet over and they wind up leaving at two hundred and fifty square feet over, that good work should be kept.
Right, even though the variance is, well, we asked for one variance and we granted one variance.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Because I don't know that many cases where we've eliminated a ton of variances. There used to be six, oh, except for Fifty, Fifty Oak, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
Yeah, we can easily do, we, we should be able to, I think, we should be able to do.
I think the majority of people that apply here get, get approval, but they get approval after we weigh in on, on
Right.
what we think is, is appropriate.
Oh, you, you know, that is the best kept secret, so we're going to have to keep it amongst ourselves and everybody's watching.
And the public record.
Both people. Um, you know, the truth is that the board does work with people, but the fear of getting rejected or the fear of going through the process and extending things out causes developers to not come before this board unless they have to. Capturing whether it's a resident or a developer is another interesting thing. I tell people, you know, developers don't come in, it's usually homeowners. Um, and, um, and then, you know, people recognizing that the process is going to take something. And so they hopefully want to come only when they think it's really required. And I think that that's very helpful as well.
Yeah, sure.
I think we've seen over the years that companies recognize I think we've seen over the years that companies recognize. That they're not going to get what they want and they always come back with a modification that I, I cannot remember the last time somebody said, I'm going to roll this, what I want, take it, take it or leave it. Uh, everybody comes back with a modification because that's how we lead them on.
But, but I hate the let's make a deal. Um, and so I don't like when there's extras thrown in so they can find a way to compromise and make it look as though they met in the middle. Um, and I don't think that we do that. What we actually do is dig in with regard to what they're asking for. And we look at three hundred and sixty degrees of whether or not it's necessary. And when we grant the variance, it's because we really believe it's necessary to accommodate a particular situation, which is exactly what the MLU asks us to do.
Yeah.
If I could just be heard on that.
Yeah, for sure.
Just to make clear, my observation is. Where the applicant begins to get a sense and then the board is asked for their comments. It's not a let's make a deal. It's, it's a, you know, I'm, I'm having difficulty seeing either your proof on hardship. I'm having a difficulty seeing how you've established a special reason. I'm seeing difficulty in you carrying the day. When, you know, I, I, I don't see why you need the extra five feet. I don't see why you need this. Please explain that to me. And in terms of what I do, having writing the resolutions, you know, you don't have a lot of niles, but I will tell you. There is an extraordinary amount of time spent explaining how the balance of what you were looking for met those proofs. You know, one of the examples we see may not come up, it's come up here, but with regard to. Our planning in our zoning where we say we want to see mixed residential and commercial in the downtown area. That was a result of changing the master plan language, putting in special reasons. And then when the individual comes in, fleshing it out within development regulations. Where those individuals were not carrying the day. I mean, they may have a special reason because I'm putting this project in. But then you don't get the bulk. You don't have the, and you're looking for waivers for things that don't fit. That's, that's sort of a, a good example of what happened in the Oak, even though it wasn't. Residential commercial. Saying to them, look, I know you're saying this, this isn't in fill. You're right. That's a good thing to do, but you're building too much. It's too, it's, it, you're, I, I don't see how you're carrying the day on your proofs. I mean, we may not articulate it that way and it comes out in the resolution. That's what I hear from the board saying, you know, you're not convincing me of your burden.
Well, and the import of that is that everybody that comes here gets a very big. And in the end, if everything that we're doing is tied to the authority that we have to grant the variances. Then you can look at apples to apples to apples month after month. And nobody's being treated differently because they know people or because they have a lot of money. And instead, everybody is tethered to the rules. And, and let me tell you, I, I mean, as somebody who works in, in commercial real estate. I see a lot of this at the office. Uh, this is the exception, absolutely the exception and not the rule across the state. Yeah.
Um, one of the things Frank brought up was standardization going forward. And I know we've, I've, I've done annual reports across three different secretaries now, but we need to find a way. For the twenty twenty four and the twenty twenty three data. Now that she was, Sheila Betty, we can, you can come up with a class in your head, classification, and then we can. Project over the next ten or fifteen years of annual reports.
Oh, did we nominate it for fifteen years?
We did.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, thinking ahead where.
When you want to have.
You know, so we have the standard data going forward. So I don't.
I think, I think it's.
Standardized form you can.
Yeah, that's.
I think it's.
I think we need to, you need to.
Yeah, I think it's.
About what your expectations are and what that, what.
Yeah, I think it's a simple.
The really is me routing the data.
No, what I'm saying is.
Data from the engineering report final.
Yeah.
Uh, most recent engineer's report is where I get that. You know, what they come in with and then what they end up with is really from Doug's resolution.
Yeah, I know, I was gonna say. No, no, I.
Before I give it to you.
I think we just categorize it in a few broad categories that we all decide are new constructions, one. Maybe porch because historically there's been a lot of porch applications. Addition, right? Historically, there was like, oh, two-story addition, addition in the front, half addition in the back, like all this wonky stuff. And it really doesn't tell you the story. And by the way, most of those apps also have a porch or something else looped in. So maybe there should be a category one or more. I, I don't know, we can line meld on it, but I think if we do that, it'll be clear. If we do, we start categorizing what Skip said. Maybe categorize what Todd said, maybe the defining factor there is whether it's an LLC or not, which also can get dodgy if, you know, there's. We gotta sort of put some thought around it. Yeah.
Well, it's a fair example. So going forward, we're all, it'll be a hell of a lot easier to do the annual report.
Yeah, well, also I built out the spreadsheet and now we just dropped the data in and it's going to categorize it going forward and it's going to clean all of this. As long as we're okay with the old data being whatever, mishmash.
Yeah, at some point you have to.
Cut it. Yeah, yeah, I agree. Okay, whatever, we can figure it out.
So I don't know how many people spend a lot of time with the observations, recommendations. And also with the conclusions, the selected issues. Like my thinking is, I really like the idea of adding a, a separate paragraph addressing. Where the modifications have been picked up and the reduction of scope. I think that will be worthwhile to have in here and going forward. And since we're going to discuss, um, the list of things and people brainstorming. Uh, what we think that the ad hoc committee should be looking at over the upcoming year or two. Uh, I'm wondering if we want to just table this at least for the moment and take a look at those sections and hear this discussion. And then incorporate that, that one paragraph with regard to those changes. Does that? Yeah, that's good.
Let's table them until February then and we can discuss that. We won't have to resolve it.
I, I, I don't know that we have to, but it just seems to me that there's only good things that we're about to talk about that may have a place in here. And I, I, I agree with Skip and I, I think it really is a big part of the story and I think it should be in the report.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, there is a couple of bullets that do say that applications are approved as presented. Or applications approved following revisions and not from meeting day.
So where, where are you?
On page two. But if you want the write-up or more color to that, I guess we'll have to.
Yeah, it's in the body.
Yeah.
It's in the body, but, but I think it should be captured.
I think too, it's a thing we could track going forward with Sheila, because otherwise think about the free damage for her to literally go through.
Everyone and.
Older manual.
Well, I, I actually think that the pie charts are really good and the summaries are really good. And I think five years from now, when people are looking back and they pull this. They're going to look to the summaries first. Um, and seeing that maybe seventy percent of what we see.
Yeah.
Actually gets reduced in scope before it's been approved. That tells the story of approval.
Yeah, I agree. The goal of this was to try to tell the story of the good stuff that's going on here, right? Stuff that I witnessed over the last couple of years that. Is not the, uh, big bad, you know, zoning board with the. Big bad over here.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
It's great. The report's been great before, but this is the best one I've seen and I'm really, really thankful for all the hard work. It's obvious. Um, that a lot went into this.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and add things with the Drew LaBarbera report.
He had a good one.
Yeah, a good one.
He had a good one.
No. Might pass the reservation, this one's better.
Thank you, Frank and Marty.
All right, great job.
Thank you, guys.
So, so, so the, the other big piece of this is that I was looking for Doug to give sort of an overview of the planning board, the zoning board. General discussion about C and D variances and the jurisdiction of the two boards. And then sort of give us a starting point for the master plan discussion. The other element that's out there is a discussion with regard to ordinances that we think. Uh, warrant some review by the ad hoc, uh, land use committee. So. Um, I don't know what order we want to do that, but I'm mindful that people came here to talk about the master plan.
Let's, let's do the master plan and then, I mean, even the ordinance stuff, even if we have to wait until Jordan looks back to talk about his points that he made.
I'm good with that. Let's go to the master plan. Doug, why don't you, um, help everybody kind of understand? Okay, um, you know, sort of run a pressure course on who we are, why we are and where we're going.
All right, um, this is, this is. A deliberately designed not to be into the reeds. This is a, a tree top, tree top view. Um, everything I'm going to tell you is, is accurate, but there are some nuances with regard to. Height variances, whether it's over through, you know, over a certain percentage. I'm not going to get into that. I'm going to try to get a broad brush. Um, and then circle it back to the master plan. All right. New Jersey Constitution gives the legislature the ability to have control of the land use development. Through the MLUL Municipal Land Use Law. The legislature then in turn has turned that over to local authority. Provided you do several things. Number one, that you have a master plan. Number two, that you review the master plan on a, on a basis. That that master plan is consistent with, or at least the development regulations and zoning regulations are consistent with the master plan. Okay? The mantra I want you to all come away with is that there is no planning, there is no development, there is no zoning without a master plan. That's the fundamental basis of all of your zoning and, and development regulations within the municipality. In addition to having a master plan. The condition to have that is that you have a land use board and either it can be a combined board. Some municipalities have a combined zoning and planning board. We, and I think it's probably the vast majority of municipalities in New Jersey have separate boards, planning board and a zoning board of adjustment. They have specifically different functions, right? With regard to the planning board, think in terms of site plan and subdivision. If it involves a site plan, if it involves a subdivision, unless there is a nuance there. Where there is a D variance, and I'll get into the variances in a second, unless there's a D variance involved, it's going to be the planning board that handles that. I mean, boroughs, nine-member board with two alternates. And they deal with everything with regard to site plan and subdivision, major, minor, okay? If there is a need for a variance and it is only a C variance. And it involves site plan or subdivision. And it could involve both, right? Sometimes we have a subdivision where there's also a site plan involved. Then with regard to C variance relief. Then the planning board is going to rule the day on that. Okay, that's on your day to day. The other function that the planning board has is it's charged with the responsibility of adopting and in a sense maintaining the master plan. We're the, we're the keeper of the master plan. And I'll get into some of those details as we, as we move along. In addition, with regard to any development regulation or capital improvement, the planning board. Will review those applications by way of capital improvement. I'm saying wherever there's going to be an expenditure of public monies. Planning board is going to review that. With regard to a development regulation, if mayor and council are going to. Uh, decide to change something in a zoning ordinance or change by way of, uh, some development regulation. They adopt it. Then there's a thirty-day wait period in which it's referred to us. They are not to act on it until the planning board has either taken action to review that. And their review is a limited review. It's a review of whether or not it's consistent with the master plan and development regulations, zoning ordinances. And if it is, fine, we report, the planning board reports back as to that. If it is not. It is the planning board's function to identify for the governing body where it is inconsistent. And usually the planning board also recommends, and again, it's, it's recommending. Where the consistencies can be, how it can be made consistent and how it can be resolved. We also do, go a little bit further, I think, uh, than most planning boards in Fairhaven. Um, that we really do a robust, what I characterize for the planning board, does a really robust hearing. You know, if there are members of the community who want to be heard on certain things, on say a capital improvement. They want to vote, voice those things. Again, realize. The jurisdiction of the planning board is fairly limited. Is it consistent? Or isn't it consistent? Where it's consistent, fine. If it's inconsistent, you identify those things. But a lot of times, the comments that we receive from the planning board go far beyond that. And our reports traditionally to the governing body, back to the governing body, have identified those things. You know, it's, this is outside the realm of consistency or inconsistency, but people are concerned about this and these are the types of comments we had. And we share that with the governing body. I think that's an important function, although it's not consistently done throughout the boards I represent. But I think it's an important function because I look at the planning board really as the governing bodies. We, we're the legislative committee, if you will, if you're more familiar with that structure. You know, we, we examine those things, we make our recommendations and we, and we present them then to the governing body. Don't make any mistake, we, we don't approve the ordinance, we don't disapprove the capital improvement. We simply review it for consistency, but we advise. We don't, we don't block it. We, we can't say you can't approve this. That's not our role. It's, it's really to act as what I characterize as a legislative committee. And present that to the governing body. See, and C variances, and I'll get into all the variances at once, but really we only have jurisdiction in the planning board with regard to C variances. The principal ones that we deal with there are C one and C two. There are a variety of them. I'm not going to get into the conditional use variances and, and those types of things. But I will get into the standards in, in a moment. The zoning board of adjustment. The zoning board of adjustment can, on a rare occasion, get involved with a site plan. But usually, that's going to be where there is a D variance. Realize, and, and again, I want to explain, the way the ordinance is structured, and in zoning board adjustment, seven members with two alternates. The way the zoning board of adjustment is structured, or at least our ordinances are structured, if you're a single family residential. You don't technically need a site, you don't need a site plan. So there's no site plan coming before you if you're, if you're developing. Okay, so the jury, but you may see as to a principal structure, and this is what we talked about before. A porch is going to come on to that, on to the zoning board, uh, on to the, uh, on to the structure. Since it's not dealing with a site plan. It's going to come before the zoning board of adjustment because you technically don't have that. So there's no site plan, but there may be the need to have certain variance removed. And in that instance, that's a time where the zoning board of adjustment. While usually it governed only with regard to D variances. The zoning board of adjustment may deal with both variances, C variances. C one variances or C two variances, because now it's not a principal structure. It doesn't involve site plan, but you're not a conforming residential development. So that, you know, the, the detail work with regard to site plan with a planning board principally commercial developments. The zoning board gets into that nuance and I, I like the way which Frank earlier referred to, you know, where, where we adjudicated it. The function before the zoning board is more like a trial type setting. It's more of an adjudication. It's more of a balancing. Because usually if you're dealing with. A, a D variance. Any, if there's any D variance even with a site plan or a subdivision, that D variance is going to come before the zoning board of adjustment. The zoning board of adjustment deals with everything that's outside of site plan. And or subdivision, unless there's a D variance. Then it's going to be coming before the zoning board of adjustment. And the reason for that, I know it gets, I'm using a lot of terms, the reason for that is so you don't end up having to jackass between two boards. You have my site plan, but then I need D variance approval before the zoning board of adjustment. So the municipal land use law is designed that where there's a D variance. In the first instance, then the, then the zoning board of adjustment can act in that role with regard to site plan. But again, it's that limited function. Also, and you'll, we haven't seen a lot of this, but one of the other functions of the zoning board of adjustment. Is to determine whether or not the zoning officer determination was correct from the beginning. You can, and usually what you'll do is, and you'll have someone, someone, we had this, I think, going back to the Dunkin' Donuts application. I think that's the good example. In Dunkin' Donuts, there was a determination that a, a D variance was not needed because it was a conforming use. That was challenged. And so it's ended up coming before the zoning board of adjustment to make a determination as to whether or not that call was made correctly. And that was the limited jurisdiction there. In some instances, what you'll see, a very sophisticated practitioner will do is like, look. I'm going to question the zoning board of adjustment officer, excuse me, the zoning officer's determination. And in the alternative, I'm going to request for the, for the same board. So you have that. That's, that's the overview of jurisdiction. Again, I don't want to get too far into the reeds with regard to those things. But to recap, constitution, legislature gives it to us, the authority through the MLUL. We then, to, in order to be consistent with those requirements, master plan, then our zoning ordinances. And that also gets us back to the reexamination report. The other caveat in order to make sure that we continue to be able to. Govern and use and have a master plan, have development regulations. And have the presumption that they are correct is that we reexamine the master plan on our schedule. That is frequent and statutorily based, minimum ten years at this time. Although you can do mini reexaminations at any time if you need to amend your master plan. We'll get into that. Let's talk a little bit about C variances.
Don't, don't go for it. So, uh, one comment I want to make was with regard to affordable housing. So everybody's familiar that, um, affordable housing is a from center issue across New Jersey. The ultimate hammer that the, um, that the state government has with regard to. Uh, forcing affordable housing on municipalities is tethered to what Doug had explained with regard to the delegation of the authority. Pursuant to what we call local rule, which is where the zoning authority is granted to the local municipalities. And so what they do in Trenton is they threaten to pull away our right to zone and control our town on its own. And so it is the ultimate hammer. And so when the overlay zones were done a number of years ago, in order to accommodate. The affordable housing requirements, it's done under the threat. That Trenton will remove our ability to govern ourselves with regard to land use. And it's incredibly powerful. It's incredibly threatening. Um, it is on the table again right now. It's going to be under discussion as to how we continue to comply. Uh, but it tethers really nicely into what Doug outlined with regard to the, the law. As it winds up in Fairhaven, moving to us from Trenton. Uh, before you go on to the variances, does anybody have any questions with regard to how Doug just set all that up? Uh, I know that for pretty much everybody, maybe except for you, Joe, that it's, it's all kind of an overview that we've all kind of heard pieces of before. Um, I love reviewing stuff that we already kind of know because it kind of resets you back to, you know, how it all fits together. So. Um, any questions or comments regarding Doug's presentation so far?
All good, Doug, let's do.
Okay, so far. So we're focusing on variances. Um, and again, I'm really only going to deal with C one, C two and the D variances. Um, C one. Commonly referred to, we usually don't do the designation here, C one is a hardship variance. And what are you looking at for the hardship? Well, C variance with regard to a hardship is that you're looking at really existing conditions applicable to that property. What's a good example? Come on in.
Take a brief break to, to give him the.
Get him the oath.
Give him his oath. Yeah, sure, why not?
I have Alson.
Yeah. Well, hour in the middle of, uh, an overview with regard to, um, the board functions. Uh, moving into a planning board discussion, we just got started with no review of the C variances. You know that you were reappointed, so you need to swear to uphold the constitution again.
There you go.
You do, you're losing.
So let, let the record reflect that Al, she already, um, has attended, is now on the dance.
Yeah, raise your red hand, follow me along.
I.
I, Al, to be very clear.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and re.
True faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and.
And to the governments established in the United States and, and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform the duties of a zoning board of adjustment member.
The duties of zoning board of adjustment member.
According to my, best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
This one's made out as altered. Okay. Well, I swear again as a planning board of adjustment member, as our ultimate number two, as an alternate number two member.
Yes.
Okay. Then, is that what happens?
What does it say?
Yeah, that's what it says.
Yes, that's correct. I mean, I got the analysis, so I.
Yeah, where were we? Okay, we're at C one. C one. C one is a hardship variance, uh, usually based on the unique characteristics of the property. I think probably the easiest one to describe, or at least to illustrate the point, uh, is a recent application that we had where the property, uh, fronted on the river. House then had frontage on the street, so you were limited as to the depth of the lot. Not only were you limited as to the depth of the lot, but there was a significant drop-off on the property, so that you're, in a sense, you're while, if you took a look at it from the sky, you seem to have a, a lot that was sufficiently deep, but in terms of actually making it buildable, you would have had to fill in that land. So that really, your footprint, if you will, was significantly diminished, which had, had a impact then on all of your per, you know, impervious covers, building coverage, side yards. But because of the unique characteristics of the topography of that property, the applicant was able to rely upon that, because you, what you're looking at is either the narrowness, the physical features of the property, which make it difficult, if not a hardship, to build on positive criteria that you're looking for, uh, excuse me, the positive criteria are those features. The negative criteria is that the variance relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and will not impair the intent and purposes of the zone plan or zoning ordinances. Not substantially impaired. And I want to, I want to focus on that, because every variance is an impairment on the zoning ordinances and really the zone plan. Right? I mean, you're asking for an exception, but in that instance, as I say, the the characteristics of that property, you couldn't get more property at the back from, from the river, you could, you were already banded on the street. Other properties were fully developed, so that because of that unique topography of the drop-off, the smaller area footprint, the applicant was able to come forward and establish their hardship variance under C one.
Okay, the other, the other interesting thing about that application is that that was in a larger zone. So that was kind of a smaller lot that was undersized, which created additional pressures with regard to development, so that created this need to understand it differently. And that's one of the reasons the zoning board exists.
The other criteria that you can use for, to, to, to establish a hardship is, you know, existing structures already on the property. So let, let's say you had a, you know, a non-conforming pre-existing non-conforming two-family. Technically, you're not supposed to be expanding that, and if you're, and in many instances, if you're not exacerbating by putting an additional residence or those types of things, you can, where you're not meeting your side back, or your, say, your, your rear yard depth, be able to rely upon that without having to extinguish that, as long as you're not generally exacerbating the problem. You'll also hear that you have to, that you can establish by way of special reasons. Really, special reasons come from, you know, that, from, with regard to different variances. Where do special reasons come from? Under your municipal land use law, there's a, there's a number that are, that are already established, light, air. They are reflected in your master plan, light, air, density, characteristics of your neighborhood zone. All of those things that you're supposed to be preserving, those are the special reasons in many instances. And again, there is no zoning, there are no development regulations without planning. In many instances, if, for instance, a municipality like Fairhaven wants to encourage infill development, you know, we don't necessarily want to have tear down, then my recommendation to, to an entity, you know, or a borough like that is put that in as one of your special reasons. If you want to encourage commercial growth with a mixed residential and commercial, uh, commercial below, residential above, put that into your special reasons. And then, that's in your master plan, that gives you a basis for special reasons. And realize what the master plan is, and I'll, I'll tie, tie this into, to variances. The master plan is your skeleton, if you will. Right? No, no zoning ordinances, no, no regulations, without a basis to find it in the master plan. Then your zoning ordinances and your development regulations flesh those things out. And I'll tie this back into the master plan and the reexamination. You're not necessarily solving problems in your master plan or your reexamination.
Hey, Doug, oh, your question on the, on the special reasons, if they're included in the master plan, does that create an obligation to grant the variance?
It, it gives, no, they still have, again, that's, they still have to prove their positive and negative criteria. You know, you can't come in and say, look, I'm building a, I'm going to build a, uh, five-story residential structure above, one, first story is going to be commercial. You said you wanted mixed use. Well, if you're not conforming, you know, then you, then you're going to say, no, a five-story, you know, first four, four above would be way beyond what we're looking for. It gives them a handhold, if you will, to establish their special reason, but it doesn't mandate, because you still have the balance of your positive and negative criteria. You would, in that instance, if you had in your, had fleshed out in your development regulations, say that they would, that the height of those structures would not exceed three stories, you couldn't rely upon the fact that you were building something that was in the special reason, but not conforming to the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Because there you would say, no, that's going to substantially impair negative and positive criteria, and not allow you to go forward. It's a good question. And in that instance, where you were building a, a permitted, it's technically a permitted use, but contained within a non-permitted structure because you're over and above, that would kick it into a D variance relief. And we'll get, I'll get into those types of things. And there, the burden for the D is much heavier. So C is pretty easy to envision. You know, it, it, the hardship doesn't have to go so far as it results in inability to use the property, only that the property's unique characteristics impose a hardship that may inhibit, to the extent the property may be used. Okay? What do you do to balance the positive and negative if someone comes in? You look to minimize longer variance relief that they have. Let's say they're not going to be able to have a sufficient side yard set back, because they want to build wider, they can't build deeper. And what are you doing on either side? You want to ask questions like, how far away is the other house on the other property adjoining this property? What's the distance? Are we doing things to buffer or mitigate the impact of not having a sufficient side yard? And you can certainly do those things, and then by doing that, or requiring an application, applicant to do those things, you mitigate the negative, the negative criteria. Okay? C two variances. C two variances almost had to come about, because the vast majority, you, you really couldn't really establish your C one. So C two is commonly referred to as the flexible C. And the variance, again, relates to a specific piece of property that the purpose of the municipal land use law would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance, and that the benefits of the day deviation substantially outweigh any detriment. And that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Lot of standards. What's it mean? Let's say you have a zone where there's a transition. Right? Um, I guess probably we can use one, one of the examples that came before. We had a, a, a commercial property in a residential area, technically it was a D variance, but they also required C variances. There was an existing building, they had some hardship, but there were also some C two variances that could be granted. The key in the C two variance is not necessarily as to the characteristics of the land, but that development in this instance proposes an alternate that doesn't simply benefit the applicant, but has a benefit to the zone plan and zoning ordinances beyond any particular applicant. That's a mouthful. But in that particular area, that particular property, it had been a commercial property for a while. The applicant was seeking to improve it, but was also going to read to limit the expansive use of that property as if it were a commercial property. Okay? And came in and made certain concessions and said, you know, I realized that I need the D variance, but it's pre-existing, it's been there for a while. The D variance, I think you can continue to do, but I want to do some other things, by the way, of changing of signage, I want to do some changing of, of these things, I want to do a variety of other things. And I'm going to tell you, it's not going to significantly change the character of this neighborhood, because it's been this way for a while. The things I want to do, it's going to upgrade the property. It's going to make it useful for, you know, another, you know, another ten, fifteen years, if you grant me these variances. And though I couldn't really rely entirely for the hardship, even though it was a pre-existing building for all of these things, I think if you take a look at the balancing criteria and preserving this, the alternative of me simply saying, okay, I'll scrap the commercial, and I'll put in three residential structures in the area which was very close to the, to the, to the downtown anyway, didn't make much sense. So if you hold me to those criteria to develop it as a conforming property, it's probably not going to be as aesthetically pleasing. We're going to be trying to stuff this thing into uh, a lot that's not going to be doing well. But I'm going to be making certain concessions, and I'll have certain conditions that will, in the long run, not only just benefit me, but will benefit the zone plan and zoning ordinances in this area. And, you know, and when you take a look at what the deviations then are, you know, do they outweigh any of the detriments? And I think that the board, in looking at those things, found, yeah, there's a detriment, but it's been, you know, it has been this property for a while. When you balance those positives and negatives, developing this site, limiting the development of the site, allowing it to continue to go forward, improving some of the parking, improving some of the the conditions by way of fencing, by way of barriers, by way of limitations of light, and also receiving a concession from the applicant in, in the long run, that, you know, we realize that there's some drainage issues, that the extent that we can ameliorate those in the future, we'll take a look at those things. I think overall, you know, doing that work by the applicant wasn't necessarily benefiting them, it may, they had, they had to expand additional monies. But overall, that was going to improve that site, which would have benefits to other property and was in and about the area. Okay? Again, a little more, it almost almost had to come about, because the C one, very few people could show a, a hardship, but if they can show that, look, by doing these things, and sometimes, sometimes they're tied to D variances, but you can also tie in a couple of other things that are benefiting by way of the bulk criteria, and say, look, I know it's not a hardship, but if you allow me to do these things, I'll get a better product for you that will be an improvement and remain and, and certainly you see this a lot of times with the infill of the residential neighborhood as opposed to a tear down. You know, there's a practical reality as to what you want to have for square footage that is a livable area. And you're saying, look, in the long run, if this is what you want, and want to tie it into that special reason that you want to have infill as opposed to simple tear downs, and this will maintain the residential character of this neighborhood as opposed to building something that is inconsistent, then you get the flexible C.
You moving a date? You moving a date? I'm going to go to the. I want to make a quick comment. I, I took a great application to discuss, because I, I think of a flexible C two as basically, if the council was looking only at this lot, what would they want the zone to be? And so I think that that application on River Road is a great example of a commercial property in a residential zone, where the accommodation of the existing structures and all melded into the idea that we were going to look at it as its own thing. What I think is starkly different than that is when somebody says, I'm in an R five zone and my lot is, is deep, and my lot is oversized, or I'm in an R ten and I'm oversized by twenty-five percent. That's not unique. We have that all over town. The truth is that few lots are actually pinned right to the minimum. And so while I recognize that there is an extreme, where perhaps a C two argument can be made with regard to a lot being exceptional or unusual, uh, we oftentimes hear, um, that sort of standard, this lot is oversized. Um, and it's important to keep in mind that, um, that doesn't make it unique and variable.
And in, in many instances, what you're seeing with the D two is, again, where the court has had an opportunity to focus on it. It's not on the characteristics of the land, but on the characters, characteristics of the land that present an opportunity for improved zoning and planning that would benefit the community. You know, so a lot of times what you're doing is, is, you're, you're coming down on that side, saying, look, doing it this way with the concessions that have been made is going to create an appropriate, desirable visual environment, and development of this property in any other way is highly unlikely. Rather than have something, you know, go to waste, you allow the C two. D one and D two variance, these are special reasons. The, again, this goes more towards where you're going to find it. The core questions for D one, D two, well, let's focus on D one. It's where the existing use, usually what we see is an existing use, rarely do we see a, a, a non-conforming structure. Usually, an existing use is non-conforming. Again, it goes back to the one application I was talking about before. But it may be appropriate to also talk about was fixing sprouts.
Yeah, sprouting mixers.
It went, you know, you didn't have a use that was permitted in the area, but on balance, you took a look and said, okay, we realize that this is not zoned for this. And what they were looking for in that particular was uh, an application where they, they wanted to put a play area into an existing school in an area where it was already sort of off the beaten path. They had developed the site, I guess with permission from the church, to allow them to have sort of a, a, a day, I, I don't want to use, I don't want to demean it by simply calling it a daycare. It seemed to be much more expansive than simply that. But it really, an opportunity for kids to, uh, you know, play with one another. It was obviously a daycare facility in, in certain regard, but also to have a play area that would enhance learning and the experience of the kids, uh, in that area. It wasn't, it wasn't a a use that was permitted, but it kind of fit into a category that we refer to as an inherently beneficial use. And an inherently beneficial use is generally something like a public use, a school, a hospital. Um, those types of, those types of things that have a purpose that supports the community in other ways than simply, say, like a, a property or that's simply going to be developed for, for, for themselves. You look to the special reasons in that instance. Um, cases that come up are head trauma facilities, quasi-public affordable housing, private hospitals for motion disturbed residents. And looking at the litany of cases that I gathered as to where they were able to establish, that even though this isn't appropriate, this is not a permitted use in the zone, this is an inherently beneficial use. And if you can establish an inherently beneficial use, your proofs become easier, it's an easier balance. Outside of the inherently beneficial uses, you would go to the special reasons. Going back to the top, top thing we were talking about before, that it promotes the safety of the citizenry, that it provides adequate light, air, and open space. If you had a criteria, say, look, I'm building something that's consistent with the reasons that are identified in the master plan as special reasons. If you had a criteria, say, look, I'm building something that's consistent with the reasons that are identified in the master plan and special reasons to tie it into that. Then you get to, again, you have to demonstrate that the negative criteria is not so overwhelming that. Initiates the zone plans, zone ordinances. If you get to establish that, then you're probably going to be able to be, to win the day on your D one. Again, the board has the ability, depending on a D variance, to come in and say, look, here's how we're going to make sure. That the. Aspects of your use. The reason, the reason we don't want this use here is because we think it's not going to fit into this residential neighborhood. And the more that the applicant can come in and establish, look, I know it's not a permitted use in this zone. But here's what I'm doing it to make it compatible. Here's what I'm doing to, to take away from the negative aspects because you have to respect and you try not to. You try not to develop by granting variances. You know, I, I, I'll, I'll step aside for a second, just a D variance category. If you find you are routinely granting certain types of variances, certain types of bulk variances. And certain types of, as they say, if you're constantly granting. Let me not use free, fair, let me use another municipality that I, that I represented or represent. You know, we were constantly granting. Patios to the rear yard of, of residential structures. Um, it was, you know, they were not necessarily recognized as a permitted use. Why something we did, we ultimately changed that, but in addition to changing them being a permitted use. Because you had impacts of impervious coverage, we designed a standard. And as long as it was in the rear yard. My way of thinking, you're taking it from yourself at that point in time. You're really not impacting unless there's a big issue with impervious coverage. Set up a standard, that said. You know, if it's going to be this far into the rear yard. And otherwise conforming. Then we changed our ordinance, we set up a schedule because we were consistently doing that. Similarly, if you found yourself constantly granting front yard porches in certain areas, as long as they were of a certain measure. Um. And this is outside of the D. You know, maybe you want to really look at your ordinances and say, look, you're consistently granting these porches as long as they're this, as long as they're that, they're otherwise conforming. You know, they don't, and sometimes it's, it's not misaligning the front set yard setback of all the other properties in and about the area. Then maybe you want to change your, your, your zoning regulations and your development regulations. But the D variances is generally is a hard one to meet, shifting gears back. You know, where you have something that is a non-conforming use. And someone wants to come in and either exacerbate or do something else with that D variance. Um, you know, the court's attitude towards the D variance, and there's actually a language out there that says. You know, you should not allow them to expand. You should not allow them to enhance. Um, they should, you know, wither on the vine, the idea is that you're not going to allow the non-conformity to be expanded. Where, where do we see things like that? Let's say you have, um, in, in a seashore community. Two existing residential developments in a single family residential zone. They're pre-existing, they're non-conforming, and the applicant wants to come in and either. Do something like, I want to expand the second floor on the rear building, or. And this is, this is the case that I handled, I want to take that rear building and I want to add heat to it. I'm not going to add a single bit of square footage. I'm not going to add any more rooms, I'm not, I'm not going to change the interior, I just want to put heat in that back building. And we were, we were successful in convincing the court that that would expand the non-conforming use, taking it from something that could be used. In the summer and maybe the shoulder seasons, now being a year-round use, and that would have a negative impact in residential character property. And something as simple as that could be used to be seen as an expanding of the non-conforming use. Um, again. You can, you can. You can spend, you know, three days of courses, and you will, if you're a member, uh, on these kinds of things.
Not three days. Only feels like an eternity.
Yeah, it's, it's much more boring than that. Uh, but. Those are the highlights, you know, the D variances should be, should not routinely be granted, you should be held to a higher standard unless you can tie it into your special reasons. And demonstrate that you are taking steps to minimize the negative impact. Cut, taking all of this back to the reexamination report.
Doug, you want to talk about the difference in voting consequence between a C and a D?
Well, yeah, I mean, usually a C is, is majority of those eligible to vote as long as you have a quorum. The D variance requires by R word, it's five positive, five positive votes. Um, so the, the vote requirement is heightened.
Look, is that, is that unique to us?
No, it's not, it's not unique to, to you, but you know, I often think it's unique where someone doesn't have, say, like a nine-member board, has, has a larger board. You, in a sense. You have to get more hits on this board, you know, you're, you're a smaller board.
It's five no matter what.
It's five, yeah, because based on what you're.
So it's five, so in another town, they may not need a super majority for.
They may, they, they would still need five, but it may not be the same proportion.
I got you, okay.
Um. If you had a larger board, obviously.
Yeah, then it's.
And which is, which leads us to some issues in some instances where someone has a D variance that they need. And, you know, it happens, life happens, for some reason we can't have a full complement, we will give the applicant an opportunity saying, look. We have, we have five people, we can do business. But you're going to have to, you know, you're having to be in a hall of fame this evening, you're going to have to, you know, thousand percent.
Right, so you only have seven voting members, so if you only have six people that show, you've got to get five of the six. That's why we focus on making sure whenever we have a D, we absolutely have seven. Um, and truthfully, we always want to have as many people as possible, so we do as much of it as possible.
Yeah.
Five plus al was the rule. That's the period.
Okay, um. Going back to the, to the fundamentals, as I said, you know, one of the rules of the legislature. Uh, said, you know, you need the land use porch, you need a master plan. In addition, in order to maintain the vitality and what is known as the presumption. Uh, the presumption that your laws and development regulations are, uh, correct. Um, you need to reexamine. At least ten, on a ten-year basis. And it can be shorter, and I'll digress very briefly, to reexamine your master plan. What does the reexamination involve? Um, generally, a look back, you take a look at your old. Master plan, what did the last master plan project as the things that we needed to take a look at last cycle? Um. You know, in our, our last reexamination report. Uh, highlighted that we needed to attend to the Department of Public Warfare. We highlighted that we needed to attend to, uh, developing, um. I do. I guess, and there'd be a community facility, but a new facility for, for the police department and a couple of other things. Well, you, you were able to check those things off. Um, in addition, and we'll, we'll end up having to do this, our timetable is going to be shortened on the planning board. Even though our reexamination. Doesn't have to be adopted until August of, of twenty-six, twenty twenty-six. Because of the affordable housing requirements, which you're going to have to do your land use element and your affordable housing element. Twenty twenty-five. We're probably going to be stepping up that aspect of the examination sooner than later. And depending on what the planning board's position is with regard to that, maybe we do the whole land use element and the affordable housing. Get that done early, and then when we get to the reexamination report, we just did this last year, or we did it so many months ago. And we're, and we're good with that. And I want, and again, I want to emphasize, at a minimum ten years. You can take a look at different elements, and I'll, I'll get through to what the elements are. You can take a look at different elements in the master plan without waiting ten years. Which is what we had to do, quite frankly, what, what we've gone with the pass and the planning, the planning boards going forward. We amended the master plan once before with regard to adopting the, I guess, the environmental commission's report. Um, you know, we had a pedestrian and.
Transportation bike.
Transportation plan, we did, so in, in a sense, that was a mini reexamination, if you will. To my way of thinking.
What about the additional ordinances that we put in last year from the land use committee, would that, does that count as part of the reexamination?
It really doesn't count as a reexamination, and again. Because what you're really doing there is when we take a look at that development regulation, as I alluded to before. Is it consistent or is it inconsistent with the master plan? You're really not touching the master plan, you're just saying, look, this development regulation, take, I guess, the last one we did, stormwater. Um, we didn't develop the regulation. Uh, New Jersey Environmental Protection developed the regulation and said, you know, your ordinances should reflect this. Your master plan isn't necessarily having the ordinance itself. The master plan might say something like. We need to attend to stormwater management. To the extent that, you know, the state of New Jersey, you know, produces these ordinances. It is the intent of the master plan, you know, we're recommended by its professions to incorporate those ordinances. You wouldn't put the ordinance necessarily in the master plan.
But, but, uh, the, but origin of a lot of the things that we changed was fundamentally tied. To the policy goals that were set for the master plan with regard to overdevelopment. Of the residential areas, there's a lot of discussion about the commercials, so in that way it's tethered, but, but independent of the plan itself.
Again, as I said, the, the master plan is that skeleton. You know, the master plan. Uh, and I, and I say this somewhat time machine, the master plan doesn't resolve anything. It sort of sets the parameters, this is what we want the development in our town to look like. We want a historic district. We want, you know, our land use to be a balanced land use, we want a balance of commercial, we want a balance of residential. We want a balance of public spaces. Okay? How we do that then? You then go into the development regulations and the development regulations say, look, okay, we want a balance of commercial? Okay, here are our commercial zones. And here's what we think fit within the commercial zones. And now the master plan will reflect what the existing zones are and may also make recommendations that. You know, this doesn't seem to be working, or we seem to be seeing a lot of variances with regard to these types of things, which is what informs us from the reports from, from the zoning board adjustment. So we might want to take a look at those things, you might not necessarily have those, you'll have the zones, you'll have the land use element, and by way of land use. Even in certain zones, you'll have a, a land use map, which is, which will identify those things that are consistent or inconsistent in. In zones, you'll have your zone map, we'll take a look at those types of things. And what you're doing is sort of looking back, what have we accomplished? The planning board's role in, in the reexamination report now, I think they're, they've decided we're not going to rewrite a whole new master plan. And I don't think, and I think that's consistent with what most municipalities do, they reexamine. They use the, the skeleton and then they say, okay, here's some things that have changed for us since last time. And you're looking at everything in the examination. Demographics. You know, has there been a, has there been a shift? Are we seeing people leaving, are we seeing people coming in? Are we seeing an aging of our population, are we seeing, you know, more younger people coming in? That will inform you as to what types of facilities that you want to have. You know, uh, uh, you know, you may want to say, okay, we need more playground activities. We may, we need more green space, we need, we need to take measures to, going back to before, to, to attend to stormwater in certain areas. And then that then informs mayor and council. That when we get to development regulations, okay, we want to see the infill. Here are the regulations that we're going to develop to guide our infill development. You know, we're still going to want to do some things like that.
I want to fly restaurant, right? So coming out of Duncan, the restaurant committee was formed, there was a public survey that was undertaken that was significant. Followed on to the public survey that was done during the last, um, master plan review. Um, and then a report was generated. And, you know, that tied into COVID and, you know, what I think that the report and summary really tried. To communicate to council was that it was identified very clearly that the residents truly valued the downtown district. And that there was an expectation that it would be maintained as it is, it would be improved, and that the, um. That the unique. Location of our residential to our commercial needs to be taken into account as to how that, those areas are developed and redeveloped. Because you have residential immediately abutting commercial, which is not always the case, um, inside of, um, commercial districts. And then, of course, the affordable housing element with regards to the evaluation of what can we do, where can we do it? And how can we do it in a way that if it all happened tomorrow, we would still recognize fair haven as being fair haven? Um, those things have all happened since the last reorg. Fred, why don't you come sit at the table?
Yeah.
Why don't you, um, kind of maybe introduce yourself and, and kind of let everybody know, you know, what's going on?
Let me just, just before.
By all means, grab a chair.
Grab a chair, just before Fred gets settled.
Want to sit?
So what, so what the master plan is going to do is take a look at all of those elements. Goals and policies, immunity facilities, circulation, historic preservation, conservation, recreation, open space. Land use and housing, take a look at all of those constituent elements and make up the master plan. Reexamine them, determine their continued viability, where they are not viable, how we need to continue to make them viable. And what we want to see the town look like. What's good about it, what we want to see change, and where we want to be in ten years. And with that.
Thanks, Doug.
Yep.
So that was a, a really good overview, really appreciate it, Doug, and thanks, uh, for having us here today. Uh, I brought Dave Aro, vice chair of the, uh, planning board. And, and Andrew Anderson has come along as well. Uh, both people have taken, um, you know, a substantial interest and, uh, have taken on substantial responsibilities with regards to the upcoming. Reexamination or rewrite, we, you know, we'll, we'll get Chris, we've, we've spoken, uh, on the phone and, or I'm sorry, over email.
Good.
Um, and we, we believe, so I'll, I'll open with, we believe we're leaning towards a, a reexamination. I mean, for a number of different reasons, we haven't formally adopted that position, voted and said, this is how we're, you know, this is how we're, um, we're going to proceed and. So with that, I can, I can back up a little and tell you what we've done, um, with regards to, um, starting this process. So, you know, in July of twenty twenty-four, at that meeting, we started talking about as a board. What we needed to do with the upcoming deadline, right? So the, the deadline is, um, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-six is, is the formal adoption date. That we'll need to, um, approve the, the, let's, for, for purposes of this session, assume it's a reexamination. And so we have to formally, um, have that done by, I'm, I'm sorry, by the twenty-fourth. And then the eighteenth is the meeting date, uh, the planning board meeting date prior to that where. That all that work will have been done and, and, uh, we will have voted to, um, to approve that, that, uh, reexamination. And so what we did in that, uh, in the, in the next few meetings is come up with a. A very high-level timeline that we believe we'd have to follow, uh, throughout twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six in order to meet the, you know, in order to meet those, uh, requirements. And we've also looked at the, um, we've also looked at the, um. The master plan and the subsequent reexamination and came up with. Uh, one, two, three, uh, five areas where we feel like the, the reexamination has to, or five elements of the master plan where we feel the. Uh, reexamination, uh, has to focus on, and so that's land use, housing, circulation. Uh, utilities, conservation, recreation and open spaces, one. And we've recently put members of the planning board. Uh, in charge, so to speak, of, of leading the reexamination of those, um, of those elements. And so, um, for land use, it's going to be Andrew. Uh, for housing, it's going to be the full board, simply because we have the affordable housing piece. That's going to be approved in June of twenty twenty-five. Uh, I believe, right, Chris, that June twenty twenty-five is when the deadline is.
That's deadline, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to, we'll be adopting the number at the, the January twenty-second special meeting, and then we have until June to twenty twenty-five.
So as you said, Doug, we, the, um. The, the, the housing element by nature of the, the statutory requirements are, is going to obviously be done. Prior to the, the full reexamination since that. Reexamination since that's the, the statutory requirements there. Um, so circulation. Circulation is now, so was Neil Blacker, but, but Neil's, uh, term hasn't been, uh, renewed. So we'll, we'll appoint somebody new at the next, at the next meeting to take up circulation. Utilities is going to be, uh, Dave with the help of, of Rich Gardella. Uh, the, the borough engineer and then, uh, construction, recreation and open space is going to be handled by David Portle. And so that's what we've come up with so far. And, you know, we appreciate being asked to come here today and, and, you know, solicit advice, feedback. Other areas or other elements in the plan that you feel maybe we need to have. Uh, a, uh, another, um. Another person in charge of, but we feel the reexamination would focus on, would focus on those areas.
But the, the, the last one.
So we're going to do a survey as well. Right, as part, I mean, we can get into, we, no. I can get into the process of how we're going to sort of like, so. Each person that's going to lead a certain element is going to go through what, what we think is going to be a solicitation of. Uh, of the public in, in terms of what they want to see in each of those areas and, and, you know, the formation of a survey. And then we'll take that information, um, and then come up with. The, the substance of the reexamination, then make that available to the public as well. Uh, and then come back for one more iteration to, to close it. I think that's the, you know, high level overview, I've cer- certainly opened that up to questions or concerns.
So just a comment about that public engagement, um, when CCH was the borough planner or the planning board planner and handled this process the last time. They introduced, I, for the first time in, in my knowledge, uh, the idea of a public survey. To actually collect a broad breadth response from the public as to what they thought. For years after that information was collected, I reflected on some of those responses. Insofar as they related to infill residential development. It would be fascinating to see some of the same questions asked, to see what some of the answers are now. A lot of the population has turned over, but also as we've absorbed the infill development, people's opinions may have changed. I think that would be very, very interesting to see in comparison. The restaurant committee also did a public survey which tied in some of those questions, um, and it was incredibly powerful. Um, to see if you believe in the democracy and you believe in majority rules. Um, you will find a lot of really useful information in finding out where the majority sits as to certain things. And, and when the majority of Fairhaven tells you how important the downtown is, it really means something, and the truth is that they're not here tonight. Um, we're all kind of representative of all the people that we know. And I think that getting them an opportunity to communicate directly with us as to some of these questions is important, one, one other thing, I'm sorry, I'm talking so much. Um, you know, there was a big dust up with regard to the sidewalks on, uh, Hans Road and, um. Grange. Um, it subsumed the council for the better part of a year. And at the end, what was concluded, um, and, and adopted was this concept. That not every road in Fairhaven should have standardized curves and sidewalks. Um, it seems to me that the rub there was that we didn't wind up with the public having direct access to the space that is the public's, by the way, in right away. But I think the conclusion that there are some roads that are still kind of quaint. And I know that Baton has been flagged to me as another road that feels that way. It might be worth trying to figure out whether or not we want to call those roads out. Uh, I'd always assumed that the circulation plan viewed each neighborhood the same, but it became readily apparent that the residents don't.
Sorry, I'm straight.
Uh, do you want to, is there, uh, can you join in this conversation?
Yeah, please, please, please.
ATP does recognize something called quiet streak. And very much even up with what you're talking about.
Tracy, could you come forward only because the owl won't pick you up when you're back there?
Yeah, and frankly, I'd invite everybody to come closer, I, I'd envision this as being this.
I thought you did.
Yeah, and so I think we're ready absolutely for all of that, so let's just talk, it, it tells us about that.
Great, well, um, I was involved in the ATP when, uh, when I moved here. Mayor Corelli informed that committee, knew me and my work and my background. And so it was a great honor, it's terrific piece of, was called out in the twenty sixteen reexamination. And that topic of circulation came up in, from, since ninety one, the original master plan and all the reexaminations since then. And that was a piece that we checked off the box, that's not just substantially complete, that one is complete. And some of the nuances that you were talking about, that was expressed by the people of Hans and Cooney, uh, was actually in the ATP. So, which takes me back to something I wanted to, if I can color in a little bit of what Mr. Kovats was saying. Uh, as a councilperson, really as anybody in our, in our town, I look to the master plan as sort of like a roadmap. It's, it's the, it's the strategic business plan for Fairhaven. And for decision makers, whether you're on council or zoning board or the planning board or the environmental commission, you know, all of that information feeds. From the ground, this is, we do the people's work.
Right.
This is a democratic form of government, um, we're, we're a representative form of government, so the master plan isn't just a bunch of technical information, it's also informed. By the people whose business we are charged with doing. So that's why I'm excited about this, because, uh, it's kind of easy to see what Fairhaven cares about if you know how to read the master plan. And I have to say, our reexamination report from twenty sixteen, I know how to read it. But, um, I can understand why it would be hard for everybody to get through it and kind of understand it, for example. Um, I went through it and looked for the complete, substantially incomplete or not, you know, incomplete, meaning we haven't done anything on it. And the one, the layering incomplete work item, which has been outstanding for some time, and then again, resurfaced in the twenty sixteen report, is business district. Um, it spells out certain, um, and I'll be happy to participate in any way I can be helpful, not here to just, you know. Point out stuff, I'm, I'm, I'll help you. Um, but it talks about a sub-element which could be anything from a vision plan to, um. Sort of a lightweight redevelopment considerations, um. But these are things that are hard to know if we're not used to reading a document like this, and I offer that only, um. Because I hope you guys are leaning on your professionals, um. Michael Sullivan is a first rate planner, and I think you're, I think he's a, a worthy source for the planning board, but, um. More, I, I love collaborating on this stuff, so I'll take a seat or pull over the chair or something and wait for the next.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add one thing, like, one of the things that, I'm not sure I said, or that we have done is we have reviewed. The, um, the reexamination and, and decided or part of the decision process around. Which elements were, were going to be highlighted in the reexamination was based on the progress that was made. Since the last reexamination, so you'll notice facilities is not part of it. Because obviously all the facilities work that has taken place and is in progress now already. We felt or we feel that that's probably not something that needs to be addressed in, in the reexamination. Not to say that, that there won't be something updated there, but it doesn't need a, that somebody dedicated to. Running a process or, and, and, um. Turning up all the things that might need to be, um, included in the, in the reexamination and so. Um, and then the, the other thing is, you, you know. We highlighted in a, a number of our meetings about what input we would need from the zoning board, right? So we're not intending to do this in a vacuum, um, and, and so hope it hasn't seemed like that, we've only just really started. Over the last few meetings, I mean, this isn't, obviously, it's, it's the, you know, it's a twenty twenty six deadline. But that comes up really fast, there's a, a number of things that need to be coordinated amongst all the different pieces of the, the town's government. People getting involved and, and, you, you know, giving their, uh, opinions and guidance on what needs to be done. So we wanted to start early, we haven't really, you know, and it was more also because none, none of the people on the board, myself included, were involved in the last reexamination. So there was, we felt like there needed to be a little bit of an education process over these last several months before we, you know. Formally said whether it's going to be a reexamination, whether we really start to get, um, like Michael Sullivan involved. We understand there's cost involved in that, so like, we really wanted to make sure we as a board were ready to run the process before we started. You know, um, taking concrete steps. Towards executing the plan.
I was really hoping what we would have tonight is sort of a brainstorming session that would sort of help you sort of get some ideas and they just. They're flooding into, to, to my head as we said, uh, getting back to the active transportation plan, specifically with regard to the quiet streets. It seems to me that, I, I would look to the greatest hits the last nine years, right? What's blown up in town, what is, what has the public actually come out to talk about? And, and what's interesting about that particular exercise was that we know what the end result was. But you can go around to the other areas in town which are getting new sidewalks. So Fairhaven Road right now is, you know, undertaking this digestion of what's going to happen. And I would gather that there's people on Fairhaven Road that feel very similar to the way that people felt on Hans and Grange. With regard to the addition of the sidewalks, I've spoken to some of them. Um, and evaluation needs to be made of where that's appropriate and where that isn't, because, you know, you're going to hear from people, I don't like change. But the truth is that we also recognize the benefit of adding sidewalks and being able to help make sure that people can traverse town, you know, in a safe manner. Oh, and with regard to housing. Our, our direct experience at the zoning board has been to sort of report back annually with regard to the things that we're seeing and. We're very grateful that the council was receptive to forming the ad hoc subcommittee and creating revisions to the ordinances that. I, I think zoning board members would agree, has gone a long way to sort of, um, sorting out. Um, the issues that were inheriting ordinances that were just sort of festering. Um, but we're very familiar, obviously, with the way that those things are, um, sort of playing out on a lot by lot basis and, 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 and all of us. Individually would have thoughts and input with regard to those things, um, but. Reexam, because in many ways, Fairhaven, it really hasn't changed all that much in ten years. Um, it's more of a, an extension of the trajectory that we've been on for several decades, where we've effectively got lots that are smaller than people would like. And we've got really expensive structures built on them, we've got a tremendous school system and uniquely. Um, you know, influx of younger families, right? And, and an exit of people's, you know, whose kids have just recently left the high school. I think they say you put up your R five sign and then you put up a for sale sign the next week. But, but we do have people coming in that are expecting more open space. And we do know that we had a year-long debate about whether or not we should be picking up another piece of property down by the dock. That was a very public discussion and it would seem to me that a reexamination of the master plan should absolutely account for that discussion. Um, because it wasn't easy, um, and, uh.
It, it's, it's. It's like, you're, you're, you're are going to be, I would suggest. I, you say it hasn't changed, I'm, to the extent that there were ordinances from everything like. Um, you know, restroom, fast food category, the protection of the residential character ordinances. Again, the adoption of the stormwater, those are certainly going to be something that we highlight as changing and impacting with regard to. Development in, in, in the borough, and I think, I think we should highlight this thing. In terms of, of the public debate, how, how do you?
No, 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 I wouldn't put it in the public debate.
No.
No, I, I think I would draw from the public debate conclusions that are unique to us. Versus the form document that you're kind of starting with, but, but that original document was formed from somebody and it was customized for Fairhaven. With regard to the, what we did with the ordinances to protect the aesthetics. That was done in a way to actually allow people to have greater density inside of those structures, so we actually created that space in the attic. So people could find another place to move to without, um, impacting air light and open space negatively. Um, and we did so because we also knew that we were putting pressure on residents with regard to the water cable, that ties back into stormwater. And not everybody was going to be able to continue to have a basement, so, so the purpose of all of that. Was actually around the idea that people wanted larger houses on lots that weren't getting any bigger, and so where do you put it?
Um, so how does somewhat subconscious reaction to the results of the report? Right, that fifty to sixty percent of these allocations are for additions.
I think maybe, maybe a combination.
Yes, how do we give it to them without?
Without affecting air light though.
That's right.
And we got a bonus with the F R fee of, of reducing the scope of these, of, of the bulk of the street.
I think you, you also, in terms of creating, creating more space, you know, you wrestled for a while habitable area.
Oh, we did.
And you, and, and you finally said, let's, you need to maybe rethink that whole thing. And I think that that was also a portion of what you, what you came to me at the rest best, of the residential character. In addition to creating. Habitable space without having to use this formula of habitable wherever.
Yeah, and, and another, another goal of that was to create consistency, because, you know, we're, Doug, and explained that if somebody comes in and you're, you're hearing the same things. What you want is for everybody to be able to do what's reasonable without having to come and spend what they have to spend and go through the time. To wind up with something that people are feeling is relatively automatic and, and acceptable. And it may be acceptable, I, I hope not, but it may be acceptable for three thousand square feet to be in an R five zone. That sort of review is, is prudent, um, but the truth is that, um, we're, we're. We're, we're in this ongoing conversation and I think that the report is critically important, we regularly refer back to the council. We blame you every month, this is the rules. This, this is the set of rules that we have and, and we believe they are purposeful. And so this is the opportunity through this and, and other, and other exercises to make sure that that's true. And that we don't just have a bunch of old dusty rules that nobody's paid much attention to because we figure we fix it on a lot by lot basis. That, that shouldn't be the goal.
A thought, or a framework for thought?
Yeah.
Um, so when you think about reexamine, reexamination or reexamination and update, there's, um. Kind of have to sleep here at Forkin Road or not, and the fork is, well, in nineteen ninety one, we had a master plan. Any reexamination that's come since then hasn't addressed anything new, it's the same stuff from then, just is it still relevant? And have we done any of it? And the truth is we've done a lot of it, not all of it, but. The fork in the road is, well, what was the world like in nineteen ninety one, because it's not just about Fairhaven, it's about the world we live in. And does our master plan meet our modern needs, uh, the way our families and the way our community lives? So in nineteen ninety one, if you think about it. We had not yet had global pandemic. We didn't have cell phones. There wasn't such a thing as a worldwide global economy, we. I, and the list goes on and on, this is, it is a different world than the, the master plan is written in nineteen ninety one. I don't know to what extent that actually impacts our little cultural. But that's one of the reasons usually a planner will ask, do you think about? Do you want to look at the larger? Framework. We have a setup, and I'm not putting that question to just you. A lot for, uh, but that's, that's one of those things that as a community, we'd want to think about. What's different today that we didn't even have any sense of, it wasn't in the, we didn't have the economic crisis, we didn't have. Such as the O A position, we didn't have, you know, all of that new health things, that new weather patterns. Um, which affect everything, we know, because we're getting the new regs from the state. And we've got to integrate those.
I'll, I'll mention one actually, like, so, electric, there's, like, a big example. Now, I think you're asking, like, do we want to rewrite or do we want to reexamine?
Or the both.
Yeah, there's a cost, there's a, there is a more or less hundred thousand dollar legal fee difference, so.
Well, let, let, if, if I can speak to that also, you can, and, and usually what many municipalities do. Is that during, I mean, you could just do a reexamination, here's our reexamination, here's the report, thank you and good night. What many municipalities do, and what we've already discussed with, with Mr. Sullivan was. In addition to a reexamination. And adoption and changes to the master plan, you would, you can do that in one proceeding, if you will. And many municipalities do it, there is a, you know, there's a company of scale doing it that way. In which the reexamination report, if we have a question of, of mayor and council, you know, we're all on the same page. That that reexamination can then also inform a decision to make amendments formally to the master plan. So it's not just this, okay, here's where we're going, but we are going to change these things in the master plan. And I would, I would be more guided by our professionals in those things, because there are certain things statutorily that. I, I think we're going to have to amend the master plan, it, it doesn't make it that exponentially, that, that cost is the exponential greater. Because in, in certain instances, for instance, there, there are provisions that came about in twenty eighteen. With regard to strategy on smart curves, storm resiliency and environmental sustainability, that our land use element. Must at least address that, there are things with regard to chi- uh, climate change, that our land use element must address those things. You've already, you know, where there's been change in legislation, in many instances, it's tied to a change in our master plan. So I, I envision without overhauling. without overhauling the master plan, that you're still going to have certain aspects, the land use element. If, if, if the statute says in twenty eighteen, you need to address this in your land use settlement, we're gonna have to address that. So there's gonna be a change anyway, so it's going to be a reexamination and an amendment or readoption of the master plan as amended. And in many instances, what you do is you inform that master plan change by putting it into your reexamination and say this should be done to the extent that we're all on the same page. And again, we don't necessarily resolve how all of those things are going to be doing, uh, gonna be addressed. But it's a lot like recognizing that our affordable housing number is now X. Depending on what mayor and council have done at that point in time, we've either accepted that or not accept that. If we've accepted that, we now need to make provisions to provide areas for that. That's gonna be and, you know, a reexamination and then some of it, something that we're formally going to modify into the master plan. We have to. So I, I, I don't think you have to look at those as an either or or because in certain instances, it's gonna be a combined exercise.
Yeah, I, I see that as sort of a technical distinction that, that may not be meaningful. I've been drafting legal documents for thirty years, there's probably a handful that I've drafted from scratch. Everything comes from some.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I think it is somewhat of a administrative distinction for lack of a better description, but I, I also think that doing a full or, or just, you, you know, rewriting the master plan from old cloth is a significant and expensive undertaking. And I think it, it, that we're gonna need support, not only from the planner, but you know, talking about like, let's just take the electric vehicle point for example, right? Like, I mean, I, I don't know if anybody on our board is an expert in, in electric vehicles and, and the charging stations and the infrastructure that's needed for all that, but we'll probably need a consultant or somebody that has that kind of expertise and knowledge to help us advise on what the, the, the plan should say or how, you, you know. It's, it, it's one thing to say, hey, we're gonna need charging stations, we're gonna need to support that infrastructure for electric vehicles and, and, and the adoption of electric vehicles, et cetera. It's quite another to have a meaningful write-up in your master plan reexamination that's substantive enough for a council to follow and create ordinances around it. So I think that um like the call, like rewriting the master plan is, is kind of how I think about a, a full rewrite from old cloth doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense and the cost. I, I think we may even be saying the same thing, that, and the, the, the cost would be better spent on, on, you know, s- support expertise to get the elements in the master plan that need to be addressed in a reexamination, get that right. And with the, you know, with, with competent um, you know, advisory support behind those recommendations.
So what I assume that you would wanna do with regard to electric is set some sort of a goal. And the real question is, it seems to me, is whether or not there is a desire to move towards having um facilities for electric charging in public spaces. Um, and perhaps things that may relate to our infrastructure that will facilitate um the development of charging apparatus on individual lots, which could be done at a high level um without necessarily a lot of the technical. I, I, I just wanna emphasize that it seems to me, based on what I've lived through uniquely over the last decade, is the commercial downtown district. Um, that really, that really blew up over Duncan. The, the, the restaurant committee exercise left me with very clear opinions with regard to what the public wants. And so where in residential, we've struggled with a twelve hundred square foot house wants to become twenty two hundred square feet. And how is it that you can do that without destroying the neighborhood? We have the very same issue right now in our downtown district because we have pressure from the outside with regard to affordable housing. We've implemented overlay zones which permit greater density and greater height in order to facilitate what the law requires that we do. And the real question is, how is it that we're gonna preserve and protect the aesthetics and the um the intangibles that are represented by our quaint downtown versus what someone might have us accept? If they have all the money in the world and they could simply take it and redo it. Um, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll conclude by saying that um the word redevelopment has been thrown around, it's being thrown around with regard to the affordable housing. Um, I'm very familiar with it and it scares me. Because what it effectively does is it enables a particular developer to work with the town to spot, don't tell anybody at the office I said this, to effectively spot zone individual um properties for different zoning criteria that relate to a particular goal. And what I think what we really want is to have a plan that works overall and not to single out individual lots and provide for relief as a matter of right. Versus establishing a plan that everybody would have to stay consistently with so that eventually over time we have something that's cohesive. I, I, I don't know Tracy whether or not redevelopment's on the table.
No, I don't know, I, this process, we're on the conversation. Um, I could see its usefulness and limited application. Um, I think the West End District has really gotten away from us. We've got tile on signs and wide driveways and narrow sidewalks and hasn't just pedestrian conditions. Um, allow parking up front, um between the pedestrian infrastructure and front door, the shop. So some of that stuff's not easily resolved. Um, you know, one building at a time over the next generation. Um, I don't, I'm not proposing, I don't have an answer right now. These are things that I've been thinking about too and I, I don't have the answer right now, but I do know one thing I will throw out for discussion. Um, and the master plan speaks to it, refers to as a sub-element, and that's a vision plan. Uh, again, a sub-element can be anything, it's up to the community to decide what that sub-element is. But the, um, as it relates to the business district, one thing that I think would be a very useful tool to um to create a sort of shared vision for our business district is a vision plan. Because if you think about it, we have the West End District, which is quite different than the historic end of town. Um, and then we have this residential section that I call guardrails, because if you're really, they're, they're lopsided guardrails, but they're very distinct in their, in these three sections. Um, but a vision plan would be sort of a hollow community engagement process where we would end up with pictures rendering nothing, uh, like it's built this way. But sort of a general sense of, uh, these are towns that may resonate for you. And, you know, you, you see Ferryman that's looking like a piece of history at your town, or there are parts of Ferryman you can see looking like uh parts of West Porter. The, these are, this is an exercise that done on the other communities um as a participant and as a professional. It's very rewarding, it doesn't take a long time and it, what it does is it gives everybody who's, you know, we're suddenly we're all walking around the same picture in our minds of what we're trying to achieve. Um, and that's a long way.
The aesthetic piece came out loud and clear in the restaurant analysis and what we concluded. And, and Fred, if you haven't read the report, the whole planning board should certainly read the report. But what it concluded is that the residents largely care what the building looks like more so than what's happening on the inside of that building. And the, 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 the problem with that is that the, the zoning tie-in to that is limited. Because we're not a planned community, we don't have restricted covenants. We have, we have the ability to create new sign ordinances and regulations which will steer. Um, but then on the other side of that, I don't know Andrew, I, I, I'm sure you've got some insight and I, I, I'd love if you could share some. Um, as, as a, as a, as an owner of commercial properties in town, there's a lot of pressure um on the individual businesses in terms of how to work within these spaces. And you look at forefront and, you know, it, it was another thing that happened in the last nine years. You know, a very, very complicated process that came before the planning board and what you wound up with is something that I think is aspirational in terms of what you could do because you've got something new and modern. And yet it still has all the flavor and character, not, maybe not all of it. But a lot of the character and flavor of what was there before. You have a commercial property, uh, commercial parking lot in the back which had to be integrated with the immediately adjacent residential properties. And it costs a lot of money. And so the, the, the real question is, where are people gonna park? Can you make these buildings bigger? Should they be bigger? And, and I'll conclude once again. Um, but on the one side of town on the west, we did overlays all the way up to this building right here. But on that side, we resisted and we fought and we did not let them require us to overlay. So that we could maintain the historical character of those areas. Um, that's important. And, and it was saying something. And we did a lot of analysis with higher and rule as to what we thought the community wanted. Now's your chance to take a look at that and conclude, as Tracy just said, right? Buildings pushed forward, parking in the back, creating a different model um that's consistent.
And even within those sort of bulk decisions about parking in the back, that, that, there are there are granular level things that can be addressed in design guidelines, which I noticed one of them, like that's actually in the master plan too, I think. Uh, but it also came out of that same um survey and the fire report out of the restaurant committee. Um, again, that, that's a really important tool, it has its place because what we don't wanna see in the west end is a bunch of mini strip centers with, you know, offices or residential upstairs. We want it to feel like a traditional main street. This is, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm over my skis here, I guess, I'm just one person, but my sense in talking with my fellow neighbors is we want it to feel more like a traditional main street. So there's ways to safeguard that. Um, the, the reason for the vision, but is it just for um what it, it, the, the, it's how it feels, right? Because it is what it looks like, but it's also how it feels, which is affected by, or which is achieved by bulk and where it sits and what happens between the sidewalk and that front door of the storefront. Um, because if it is gonna be twelve feet back, there's all sorts of opportunities for tables and cornhole and you.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna put them on a stop, but Andrew, I think in all the planning board meetings, you had some comments about that.
No, so, so I think there are a couple things, right? I think some of it is a matter of codification. So I think some of this, some of this structure is in the master plan and has been, has been in the reexamination. But it hasn't been codified. And some of the reason we started talking about it at, at the planning board here hearings early on is just there had been in the commercial district, a takedown of four or five properties. And substantial money was put into the properties to restore it. So there was an opportunity missed to bring those properties street-side. Because you would have had to come from the board for variances. And the cost associated with that, the time associated with that is prohibitive, right? It's not gonna be financially accretive. So, you know, I think that it, there, there should be a sense of urgency to codify something in a way that, that makes sense and aligns with the master plan, so we don't keep missing those traders. Um, because, you know, like the buildings that I own, I put substantial money in them, so they're dead for the foreseeable future. And it's a shame, because if those codes have been in place at that time, I would have taken the extra cost associated with it to do that, right? And so the more trades that happen.
Right.
Yeah.
The fewer of those that has.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we need to do that. And, and Sheila, with the vision plan that you're referencing, what we asked you to pull? Do you know?
Oh, that's the PPS quarter study, is that what you're talking about?
It, it may.
It's not that, that really isn't a vision plan, it's, uh, but it's cool, you should definitely look at it.
And, and there's a lot of good information, right? So, so there's a lot of good thought about that business district. So, um, and, and I think, you know, part, part of the um challenge is balancing a developer's need for financial success and a town's desire to maintain sort of the integrity in small scale of where we sit. And it's a very fine line. Um, and I think that what exists today in the downtown district, specifically the western is a, is a mix of product that shouldn't exist, to put it nicely.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think to solve that is important. And I think it feels to me that we're at a time where there's a lot of alignment in a desire to solve that. And so I think we oughta take advantage of that.
Um, well, well, Andrew, the, the consequence of not establishing what we want is to have somebody else tell us what we're gonna do. And so that's very much how the affordable housing piece feels.
Well, and, and so my concern with the affordable, and, and I know expert in affordable housing, but the, I, I know I have to be a little bit dangerous, but the, the concern with affordable housing for me, right, is as a a town with very limited bedroom plan. We're gonna be in a position where we need to identify uh, our ability to meet the new needs for round four. And if we can't do that in a substantial way, there's nothing that prohibits Trenton from saying, you know, the way you guys can do this is instead of having a thirty-eight foot restriction, very easy that you can have a fifty foot restriction.
Well, it's gonna be done soon. It's gonna be done. Well, 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 so, so what we did when we developed the overlay zones was work with the courts and the affordable housing groups to basically push, we pushed them and they pushed us. And so what we wound up with, with, with the thirty-five foot height limit in the commercial district got adjusted to thirty-eight so as to provide for a realistic opportunity to create the third floor. The parking tension is there and will remain there, the setbacks and the bulk requirements were massaged but ever so slightly. There was a planning purpose with regard to parking in the rear versus parking in the front. And, and so some of that is there. Now, the question is, and the affordable housing group's gonna have to figure this out, but notwithstanding the new numbers, there's an adjustment from what they say we're required to have. By the way, if anyone doesn't know, it's hundreds and hundreds of affordable apartments which you can only get by building five times that many, because twenty percent is generally the affordable allocation.
Oh, the number was like in the nineties or?
But, but then there's an adjustment which is called the realistic development potential, which is tied into how many pieces of land you have that are vacant. The problem is that when a property comes up and becomes vacant, like the Snoko say, that all of a sudden skews everything in the other direction.
Yeah.
And so we haven't yet figured out exactly how this is going to lay on top. But just know that what we have right now is something that the people that were involved believe was a balance that we could live with that wasn't gonna turn Ferryman into something entirely different. And the question is now, are they gonna tell us that we need to go further?
We have to do that again now, right?
So, we do.
And, and
Short period of time too.
Right, and, and, and the, and the places that we can overlay now without compromising, exactly what you're talking about, is very limited.
But all the arguments that we had but all the arguments that we had before are still true.
Yeah.
And, and where we overlaid and where we didn't and why we did it, they all agreed with us as recently as eighteen months ago.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be interesting to see where council advises us we have exposure based on what we didn't do.
Big difference this round is we have affordable housing to play back.
Yeah.
The exposure last time, which threw us into a legal battle and compressed and performed with requirements on Ferryman, you know, it was a test.
Then.
And we were exposed, we did not have. So we have a plan, we are in compliance. And there's another round coming up. And we will have a realistic, there'll be an analysis as to what we actually can do and the adjustment will happen and all sorts of lawsuits will play out and, you know, separate from us.
Which have already started by
Yes, yeah.
For several, we're not any part of any of that.
But
It's provided by the house, trying to say. I, what I wanna say is, we're, we're not, we, we're not, uh, we don't have to sound like a guardrails.
Yeah.
Okay, like that's what I know.
Yeah.
That's what we have to do.
So, so to understand your point further, you were suggesting some of these other properties on the western. So I'm just gonna, on, on the western side, before they trade, before it's taken out of play, let's codify something that allows them to be. Well, there's some, there's some low hanging fruit. For instance,
There is.
Front yard setback in the commercial district, they'll define it thirty-five feet, yet every survey that's been done that I've read wants it pulled to, you know, much closer to the sidewalk so that it's engaged in the community, so that it's more walkable, to get parking behind, to all of these things, right, which makes a lot of sense for a downtown district like that. And so the properties that just traded and were improved are no longer viable for that, right?
That's right.
So
The opportunity's been missed.
All knows, but, but, but the opportunity's not gone, right? And things are gonna continue to trade and the town continues to grow and there's new blood in here and people have different visions. That's gonna continue to, to happen. So, um, so, so I think it's important to codify that stuff as soon as we can. And some of that's gonna tie into the master plan and some of that's gonna tie into, you know, do architectural covenants and restrictions belong so that we can have some sort of guardrails on design and aesthetic which can help, you know, keep the town painter with more density, right? Visual. So there, there are a lot of little tools that you can use to, to sort of place guardrails on these things. And then, and then I think the, the other thing um is it, it's gonna be important to signal to quality developers, investors that, that you wanna help the town grow in the right way, that there's business to be done here because
Development for the year.
Right. If, if the board and, and the town is seeing this as not approachable, you're left with developers that are gonna cut a lot of corners to be able to make the numbers work, which isn't gonna be beneficial to anyone. You're left with developers that are gonna cut a lot of corners to be able to make the numbers work, which isn't gonna be beneficial to anyone. And, and to Todd's point earlier, I mean, you know, we will do everything we can to stay away from coming in front of the board for a lot of different reasons, right? So, so.
And then you're left with schlocky developers who cut corners to make it work.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Technically. To, but literally. App sure area of like say, or a certain of a business district, because you're gonna say, you know, it's, it's obviously used for affordable housing, but it's also used to say. This is a special area of development. We have a separate set of rules that apply for this. Welcome to Fairhaven. When you buy building and say, we are, it is our goal to, to restore it to, this is what it's gonna look like. Or this is how, this is what the development is gonna look like here. And I'm, it's not the same thing as redevelopment plan. And designating a developer, which I, Todd, I agree, that is not appropriate for Fairhaven in my opinion either. But um, but some of those powers can still be useful, because. Uh, like, as you said, getting it done, we need to look at it holistically.
Yeah.
Is, I think this is more.
And, and I think there are other. Yeah, I, I think that's right. And I think there are other holes, right? To your point earlier. Kids graduate high school and if their sales time goes up. And I think that's doing part, because we don't have any facility to allow older residents to remain in Fairhaven. In any affordable manner. So, for instance, town has its own, right? I don't know where that can go. I don't know if it belongs. But I know that I've heard from plenty of people that have raised their family here generationally, they love to say, there's no opportunity. So, you know, I, I think there are other things like that that we can do to keep people in this town that. Have been here for ten, twenty, thirty, forty years. I don't know if there's space for it. I don't know where it is, but I think some of that can go into. A transition zone between townhouse between commercial districts. I mean, I, I, there, there are other things like that that. Can also help soften some of the streets in, in commercial areas.
Free comment. I think the master plan is the seed for some of this further discussion. I don't think it answers any question per se, but getting to the heart of what the residents want and distilling that into the plan. Is part of setting the direction for the future. That's number one. Number two, the, the tension I think. That I think we should be honest about is that there, there has been a belief over decades that there's nothing wrong with downtown. And there's a belief that if downtown doesn't change, then Fairhaven doesn't change. And so the, the acceptance of the idea that it should be expanded is something I think that people disagree with. If there was a vision of redeveloping it in a way that was better than other ways. We should point in that direction, because it may happen on its own. It may happen as a matter of right, or it may happen at the end of a lawsuit. But getting ahead of what we want can only help us make sure that what eventually comes. Is not inconsistent with what our vision is. And the last comment is about Rumson. And so while we were going through our affordable housing thing, Rumson was going through theirs.
Yeah.
And unbelievably, we were not in compliance. We were racing to the court to figure it out and get it done, and we did. Because we were guided by some, some really, really good people. And Rumson, who was in compliance, at least for a while, had fallen out. And so I don't know if anybody's driven through any of the townhouses that were developing now in Rumson. But they are over a million dollars. There are arguments that they should have been done before they got three and a half.
Three, yeah.
Three and a half.
Two seven to three and a quarter.
So they're, 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 they're outrageous. But, but my question for Rumson is. Did you wanna do that on your own? Or did you wanna get that forced on you? And a lot of people, now that it's there, as long as they don't live immediately adjacent to it, they're like, eh, it's not so bad. But I went to Forestale with hundreds of residents.
Yeah.
That you would have believed.
I was at that meeting.
You, you, Chris, you remember, you would have believed they were about to put a nuclear power plant at R F H. I mean, it was unbelievable. And, and that's what comes from.
And move to a bigger room. Is that a room that's filled?
That's what comes from not being in control.
Right.
And so the truth is that control comes from having a good master plan and thinking it through. And the sidewalks will show you that we're always not gonna agree. Tracy and I certainly don't on sidewalks, but it's okay. Because in the end, she won, the residents got what they wanted, let's codify it. It shouldn't just be the group that got motivated to fight doing it. Let's go pick up that and any other things. And you're gonna have to find compromises, because you're not gonna find a hundred percent of the people agreeing on anything. You're gonna find fair majorities in some cases and clear majorities in others. And that's where your direction comes from.
And, and by the way, to that point, we've talked about at the planning board level. I think, you know, the, that, that public survey is, is really important, because at the end of the day, we're doing the residents' work, right? So, and in the, in the last survey, I don't remember the exact numbers, but I think it was. Eight hundred and change or nine hundred respondents out of town sixty-five hundred. In my view, that's not sufficient. So I, I don't know what the, I don't know what the solve is for that, but I think as a, as a board, as a team, I think. The, the town deserves our attention to that and, and a solve to figure out how we get. Two thousand or three thousand people responded. That means knocking on doors. I, I, I don't know what the solve is.
And it's fine, I want my kids to think if you go that way. But, but Michael, Michael solved it.
That's the cost. Where cost is gonna, is gonna be required to get the results that we need.
Something like that though, and I don't know if you can address, I don't know if you can address it in a survey, but if you said to somebody in the survey, what do you think of the downtown? Do you like the way it looks? Do you want it better? But if you give an example of this is what we're talking about, then you'll get a better response, a more informed response.
A hundred percent. It's all about context. So I think the clearer we can be in what we're asking that they want. That it, it, it's all about that context and it's all about the questions we ask. So if we do it right. With, with all that guidance, we're gonna get really informed responses. I mean, there's gonna be a bunch of little shit responses, but if you look at those numbers, it's like, you have a bunch of the old farmers that responded, a bunch of the new people that responded. And a huge void of the middle that are silent. And part of it is, I think, because. You, like, I personally didn't respond to any of those surveys when they were done in town. I was new in town. I didn't know about it, right? So I think we miss some people and obviously, the more we invite, the more. Not, you know, the, the, you know, variances and opinions and all that sort of stuff, but we can sit through them in a smart, efficient way. And then really design or redesign a plan that takes a lot of into consideration. And then get counsel to codify and then, and really start, really start pushing it forward so that. So that we have exactly what you said, so that we're ahead of it, so we don't get a room full of two hundred people freaking out about the townhouse because we planned it.
But you're gonna get that anyway. You're gonna get that. Nobody said, told me there was, there was a survey. Please, I hear it all the time.
Well, yeah, there's a couple of really great try and to sort of community engagement stuff that, by the way, C C, she's just gonna have. All sorts of ideas for you. I, I urge you to, because I personally don't think this is where we pinch pennies. Um, I think this, this is willing to do it right. Um, we do want robust input from. But we have pretty good line of up, especially events and things that happen ongoing throughout the calendar. They're gonna say, well, give us your calendar of events, when is the community get together? And the, the sort of a tent, a table and room maps and pictures of other young towns and they'll, they'll, you know, they'll, they'll have it, they'll staff it. So, and volunteers will be there and you'll engage roughly the residents who, who have a conversation from that, a technical. A person, a trained person, that's how to pull out what people say and, and what they don't say, because what they don't say is sometimes isn't important.
Yeah.
Um, because they're, they're not paying attention to it. It doesn't matter to them as much, but um. I, uh, the, the only other thing I wanted to say, uh, on the percentages. Of the respondents, if you figure, we're twenty-two hundred and also six thousand, roughly six thousand.
Right.
A third of them are eighteen and under. So you're really. Yes, it's roughly a third of our above residents, so our eighteen and under. Was one part, also six, seven, if he's accessible, but the, the point is, if you get nine hundred people. To respond to the survey is actually pretty.
Yeah, no, that, right, if that's the percentage, somebody eighteen versus, yeah, that is, that is.
C C H was thrilled with the response right that we got based on their experience. I, I wanna point out that the difference between what somebody likes and what somebody doesn't like is oftentimes how it affects them.
Yeah.
And so residents oftentimes think that, that what they want is fine, because it makes sense to them. But if it were their neighbor doing it, they would feel completely different. We see it every single Monday. Um, sidewalks, right? Everybody thinks sidewalks are a good idea until somebody says, well, that ten feet is ours. You're gonna have to, um, to, to shovel it and you're gonna lose your parking and whatever else. So that needs to be filtered, because you can't just accommodate. Everybody, uh, otherwise nothing would ever happen. Um, and, and with regard to the Dunkin experience, right? Like in rooms, I, I don't know how many of you were kind of riding that out with me. Some of you are familiar faces in that regard. It was unbelievable, right? We had. Four hearings in gymnasiums with a hundred people, and then we did the restaurant committee. And then we actually went and did their work. And we, we, we listened to them and we tried to fix it and. Maybe it wasn't like this, Tracy. Maybe this many people showed up to see how it went. They all lost interest.
Yeah.
They got really, really fired up about Dunkin, and then they left it to the rest of us to figure out what they meant. And they kind of stopped participating. That's the reality of it. Um, and so we shouldn't be put off by that. Um, they think, Fred, that you got it, right? You got it? You got it under control? They assume you got it. And Trace.
Yeah.
And Bron. And that's.
Get loud and clear.
Is there anything we haven't touched on? I'm so thankful you all came and we managed to have a, um, a, a purposeful night of discussion. I, I think that the master plan is, um. Kind of why New Jersey's a little special, right? Local rule's really cool. It has its burdens, takes a little bit longer. Um, but we really control what happens here. This isn't the way it works all over the place. Um, and it's just really cool that we take it so seriously.
I'm concerned that this affordable housing thing in the next, maybe not this year, five years, but in ten years. Is going to cause the state to usurp some of our local. I really do.
Well, in some ways, they already have.
Personal opinion, because if we can't, if we can't come up with something appeasable, there's, there's gonna be an issue. Just say, screw you, you can put up a ten-story.
I think that's right. I think that's right. I, I think that's. The direction it's going, and I think that there, there's nothing that prevents them from doing exactly that. If they're, in, in specifically in these towns that have vacant land to job at some point. If it keeps trending the same direction.
We say we got no land, they're like, build up.
That, that, that'll happen at some point.
Once I was getting to, you know, sooner this stuff.
Yeah.
Trades, right? Theoretically, it, it eases the, the obstacles to do that. Those properties are therefore also taken out of play in a good way, right? And it limits the amount of density that can be put somewhere.
Not necessarily.
Well, it, it, you can't do something once you.
Limit our ability to identify further overlays that will satisfy. The, the state.
What happened in the next period.
Working towards meeting their requirement. So at some point.
Yeah, the chicken comes home through.
You ran out of land, but you were planning it there.
I mean, at the end of the day, we have about one unit, so.
I, I don't think it's any necessarily. Better term, but I, but I think you're right. I think that's what happened because at some point all these towns will reach an end.
Well, the truth is that going from ten feet at Sansu to thirty-eight feet is a significant change, and that's already on the books.
Yeah.
Um, what I wanna be sure that everybody remembers is that, um, more people participating in this makes it better. And so our, our circles are all independent, maybe some are concentric to an extent, but we're gonna talk this up. Like, we gotta make sure that when you have a hearing with regard to the master plan, that we get people in the room. And that people really engage with this, because even with the affordable housing, right? Like. We feel as though we are speaking on behalf of the residents and we know when we need to dig in. We have to be sure that we're right. We have to be sure that we're on point and that everybody's supporting what it is that we're doing. And not just assume that everybody thinks everything is peachy keen. All right.
I don't think your average resident has a clue about what's happening in affordable housing in this round. I really don't. I read a lot about it and in different areas, so yeah, I'm, but I guarantee you, your average person has no idea. And that's why you get the reactions of the X hundred people in Rumson complaining about, you know, that's what they show up.
We never once decided to change it and make it thirty percent.
Okay, uh, there's nothing else to closing, right? Are we good to just wrap it up when they're all in favor?
Yeah.
I think you're never like, this was a complete one-off. You'll never see another one like this. All right. Do we get it all in favor audibly?